Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board. The time is 6:02 PM on April 18th, 2017. Uh, the board seated in front of you tonight is Stephanie Fortner, Director Heather Douglas, Director Michael Stoffey, myself Bob Gerhart, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jessica Craig, and Superintendent of Schools Kate McGuire. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members, before you is the agenda for tonight. Are there, is there a motion, or I'll make a motion to accept the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Directed by, seconded by Director Stoffey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is accepted. Next up on our, uh, agenda for tonight is audience opportunity to address the school board, but I do not have any cards that indicate that anyone wants to address the school board. Anybody? Okay, we will move on then. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll begin my report tonight by, oh, let me back up. Excuse me, I'm gonna begin with our mission, which is where I always begin. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride, and the points of pride celebrate the contributions of community members and staff and students to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning, and I've asked cabinet members first to share those points of pride.
In the category of achieving dreams, Aidan Wu, a fourth grader at Palmer Lake Elementary, was named a runner-up in the 2017 United Way Star Tribune essay contest. Nearly eighteen hundred students entered the contest by sharing their thoughts about the meaning and impact of kindness. Taylor Wnt from Maple Grove Senior High, Margot Cooms from Osseo Senior High, and Michaela Hayes from Park Center Senior High were named 2017 Athena Award winners in Osseo area schools, recognizing their outstanding athletic accomplishments. All three women will join winners from other Minneapolis-area high schools at the forty-fifth Annual Minneapolis Athena Awards Luncheon in May.
Osseo Middle School students Brady Kwan, Matthew Ojuri, and Carson Wiles formed a team that was named state champion at the Minnesota State Vex Robotics Competition. They clinched the title in an exciting last round, and now will participate in the world championship in April, where they will face up to one hundred and sixty teams from around the world. Members of the Park Center Senior High Model United Nations team won several awards at the Model UN State Conference at McAllister College in March. Five students earned recognition for best position papers, and two students earned Best Delegate Honorable Mention awards. Park Center's team, led by teachers Sonia Nunez Gibbs and Nancy Zimer, began ten years ago at Northview Middle School and has since evolved into a high school team.
Ceramic pieces created by Osseo Senior High students Braylon Ramseth and Ben Gilbertson were selected for the twentieth annual National K-12 Ceramic Exhibition in Portland, Oregon. The exhibition is the premier jury ceramic competition for K-12 students in the United States. The event attracts professionals from universities, colleges, museums, art galleries, and its ceramics arts world. Zam Zam Abdurrahman, a fifth grader at Palmer Lake Elementary, is a top-ten finalist in the Dare to Be a Leader essay contest sponsored by Minnesota Dare and the Minnesota Timberwolves. The winning entries were displays at the Minnesota State Capitol and will be posted on Minnesota Dare's website and Facebook page.
In the category of contributing to community, for the third consecutive year, more than forty student leaders from Maple Grove Senior High's Link Crew attended the Shriners Hospitals for Children Twin Cities Annual Prom for Patients. From dancing to singing to making new friends, Maple Grove's Link Crew leaders documented their evening on the group's Instagram page. A representative from the Minnesota Humane Society recently visited with Cedar Island Elementary first graders to talk about responsible pet ownership. Cedar Island students chose to contribute to their community by raising one hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to support the Humane Society.
Our next category is lifelong learning. The Twenty-Second Annual American Indian Education in Wasipi will take place on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, from noon to six PM at Osseo Middle School. This lively, free event features artesian exhibits, demonstrations, Native American dance, food, and more. Donza of Park Center Senior High's Indigenous Student Circle will perform in a special ceremony to honor local American Indian, Indian graduating seniors will be held. For students at Zane Wood Community School, the school's first-ever Scholars Choice Day on March seventeen was all about exploration. The event was designed by teachers to build interest in science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, or STEAM, while increasing student engagement and creating lifelong learners. Students chose from more than twenty courses taught by Zane Wood staff members and volunteers from Boston Scientific. For this school year, Fair Oaks Elementary introduced a new opportunity for students. An after-school video production class allows fourth and fifth graders to enhance their reading skills and gain basic knowledge of video production and editing. Students will use video equipment and editing software to then create a short music video.
In the category of mission-driven employees, Anne Bolin, social studies teacher at Maple Grove Senior High, is the recipient of the 2016-2017 BFW District Seven Teacher of the Year Award. Bolin was nominated through the Palmer Lake Post in Brooklyn Park. The award recognizes educators who foster development of democratic principles, promote America's highest ideals, and focus on citizenship education topics with their students. Osseo area schools is collaborating with the Minnesota Department of Education to implement an evidence-based practice that aims to improve graduation rates for American Indian and Black students who receive special education services. Osseo is one of only four districts selected to partner with the state in this work. The district is receiving a hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year for five years as part of the partnership. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has once again recognized Osseo area schools for its outstanding commitment to music education with the Best Communities for Music Education designation. This honor acknowledges efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who work together to ensure access to music learning for all students as part of the curriculum. Osseo is one of only seven districts in Minnesota to receive this honor in 2017, and the only district in the state to achieve this feat every year since 2009.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll close with just two pieces of information. Uh, first, I want to share information about the Core Planning Team, an important advisory group that informs the district's strategic planning process. As you know, each school district in Minnesota is required to have a strategic plan that addresses five state-mandated goals, and each spring, our school board approves the priority strategic plan work for the next school year. The Core Planning Team is a group of community members, students, and staff who come together annually to review progress on our priority work and to influence priorities for the next school year. This is the team that devised our mission, uh, and our core values ten years ago. Two members of the team have been participants since 2006, but typically, there's a number of new participants each year. School Board member Heather Douglas participated this year as the school board representative. The strategic planning process provides discipline in our planning and accountability process, it helps us set priorities, and through an annual updating process enables the board to recommit to what it believes we should be doing annually. Now that the Core Planning Team has completed its work, cabinet members and I will review the recommendations of other community advisory groups, like the Deepak Group, which will make a presentation tonight, and will make recommendations to the school board in May then about, uh, priority work considerations for the next school year. Lastly, I want to make community members aware of the opportunity to attend the Fiftieth Annual Staff Variety Show, which is called the Waste Basket Review. The purpose of the Waste Basket Review is to raise money for post-secondary education for students who are graduating from Park Center, Maple Grove, uh, the Area Learning Center, and Osseo Senior High. In fact, more than a million dollars in scholarships have been given out by the Waste Basket Review, uh, in the last fifty years. Opening night is this Thursday, April twentieth, at seven o'clock PM, and the show runs this week and next week, Thursday through Saturday, and a matinee only this Sunday at two-thirty PM. All shows are at Park Center. You can buy tickets at the door or online by going to the district website. The Waste Basket Review is a family-friendly event, and the proceeds go directly to our own high school graduates. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. Next up on the agenda are school board reports. Our first report for tonight would be an April fourth, 2017, School Board Work Session Report. Uh, Director Burgett.
Mr. Chair, thank you. The school board held a work session on Tuesday, April fourth, 2017, to finish its discussion on the Achievement and Integration for Minnesota Plan and Budget. The Achievement and Integration for Minnesota funds received by the school district are used primarily to provide direct programming to students, provide professional development to staff, maintain equity team staff, sustain robust thematically-based programming at our six magnet schools, and maintain our membership in the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Collaborative. Immediately following the school board work session, the school board convened a special school board meeting to approve the Achievement and Integration for Minnesota Plan and Budget. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can also access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website.
Thank you. Next up is a report, uh, April eleventh, 2017, School Board Work Session. Director Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a work session on Tuesday, April eleventh, 2017, with a primary focus on learning about progress in two areas of the district's World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan. Board members first learned about the district's second year of work to implement the middle school model, including interdisciplinary teams, advisory, differentiated instruction, and out-of-school-time programming. Board members heard the results of an assessment of middle school practices at each of our four middle schools using the School Improvement Assessment Survey developed by the Association for Middle Level Education. Through the use of the survey, each site identified implementation gaps in each of the three areas in the assessment: curriculum instruction and assessment, leadership and organization, and culture and community. The assessment data was then used to develop school improvement and site-level professional development plans. Board members also heard an update on the implementation of research-based positive behavior intervention practices that promote equitable, equitable student achievement. Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, is an implementation framework designed to improve academic and behavioral outcomes for all students by emphasizing the use of data to make effective decisions regarding academic and behavioral practices in schools. Along with guest presenter Erin Barnes from the Minnesota Department of Education, staff members shared information about data analysis, staff training, work underway to identify antecedent triggers, and environmental causes for behaviors, and use of research-based tools for identifying and promoting positive behavior. PBIS work will continue into next year, including trauma-informed and restorative practices training. The final topic covered at the work session was administration's recommendation to implement a new finance, human resources, and payroll system provided through TIES. The new SunGuard eFinance Plus system offers significant improvements over the current system, which will be phased out by TIES over the next couple of years. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on the district website.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other reports? Uh, in that case, I do have one, it wasn't on the agenda. Um, over the weekend of March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, I had the opportunity to go out to Denver and attend the National School Board Association National Convention. Uh, some of the sessions I attended cover topics such as board chairperson and superintendent relations, so superintendent's probably delighted with that idea. Board governance versus management, improving community outreach through effective use of social media, and career and technical education. There are two other sessions presented by superintendents and board members of two school districts in Kentucky and Kansas that I'd like to go into a little bit more detail about. In one of those sessions, the superintendent Roger Cook of Taylor County Schools in Kentucky told the story about how he went from being a poor, near dropout in that very same school system to becoming a superintendent when the district's performance made few others want the job. Uh, during superintendent's Cook, superintendent Cook's tenure, he reimagined the schools abandoning the concept of age-based learning and dividing the school into multiple tracks in which each track approaches student learning in a different way. Simply put, his system admittedly bent some rules and even some state laws, but no student is allowed to fail, period. That doesn't mean they're simply not given Fs, but quitting is simply not allowed to be an option. Last year, Taylor County Schools had zero dropouts. One of the more interesting ideas was that, uh, one of the school's multiple tracks included an academy format. Exceptionally high grades in regular classes are required to qualify for the academy, then the student has to apply for the academy, or has to apply for admission to the academy. Uh, admission would not only grant student access to higher levels of academic challenge such as HP and AP courses, but also additional perks that are not available to other students, such as open campus privileges and parking spots. Uh, I thought that was pretty interesting. In another one of the sessions, representatives from the North Kansas City Schools in Missouri discussed how by fifth grade, a middle-income student is approximately three years ahead of a low-income peer. Uh, while both students can learn at the same rate during the traditional nine months of school, regression over the summer occurs for many, wherein the middle-income and upper-income student would have additional opportunities to read or visit museums or have these, this different form of stimulation. The lower-income student didn't have a lot of those same opportunities, so they would actually regress, whereas the middle and upper-income students would actually progress about two more months during that about-three-month period. Um, the discussion then went on to explain North Kansas City Schools' district strategy to overcome such problems by adding a full thirty-one additional instructional days to the district calendar in two of their elementary schools. This was not remedial summer school, but actual instruction for everyone, where, for example, a student, uh, graduates second grade around Memorial Day like usual and enters third grade around June ten. Extra days were paid out of Missouri State's instructional days formula, and teachers received extra pay for the extra time. Teachers were given an opportunity to opt out of the additional time, and thirty percent took the opportunity to do so. But more interestingly, students and families in these schools were also given the opportunity to opt out. Out of eight-hundred-and-fifty students in the two stu, in the two schools in their experiment, only fourteen students opted out, and of those, fourteen, seven eventually wanted back in. So that's an ongoing experiment. Uh, one of the universities in Kansas is sponsoring the study to follow up and track the effectiveness of the experiment, and there will be more information to be had in the future as this unfolds. So, thank you for that. Next up on our agenda is the presentation by the District Planning Advisory Council, Deepak, on their final report and recommendations. Our presenters for tonight are Don Pascoe, Jill Lanay, and Sandra Day. Welcome.
We actually have a cast of thousands here, so, uh, good evening, school board members, Superintendent McGuire, cabinet members, members of the audience. Uh, I'm Don Pascoe, I'm the Director of Research and Assessment, and I've had the privilege of working with Deepak, uh, for many, many years, and it holds a special place in my heart. Superintendent McGuire talked about the mission and the words in that. Underneath that mission are core values, and there's one that I think really connects to what Deepak is all about, and is, "The better decisions emerge when diverse perspectives are intentionally included in a collaborative process." That's exactly what Deepak is. Is a collaborative process where we bring folks together, their best thoughts, we look at the state of the district in specific areas, and they make recommendations that are fed into the mix to help us decide what the best route to go is. Uh, it has been a great experience for me. Over the many years, there are some big changes that were initially recommended in Deepak and took the collaboration and work across many different areas to bring to fruition. Uh, this year, been a great year. We have a crowd here behind me, you don't want to listen anymore to me, so we're going to bring the folks up. Marty Cohen is our lead, he is going to give you a little background and lead you into the presenters from each of our three subcommittees that will be giving you, uh, our findings for the year. Marty.
Thank you, Don. So, we'll start with who we are. So, district, or Deepak is made up of parents, students, community members, district staff, and some school employees. More than two-thirds of the folks involved are part of parents and community. The Deepak System District Planning Advisory Committee is created based on state law, it is also sanctioned by school board policy. The purpose is to assume, is to assure community, school cooperation, and setting improvement goals, evaluating progress towards meeting annual objectives, and reporting the findings and recommendations to the entire school community. Membership, as I mentioned, is parents, guardians, community members, high school students, classroom teachers, administrators, staff, and this year, we had the privilege of two school board members. We meet on a regular basis, starting in September, and as I said, we follow State Statute 120B-11, as well as school board policy 616, and I believe the other one is 651. School board, uh, the school district will establish an advisory committee, is what it says. The, the advisory committee will recommend the school board rigorous academic standards, student achievement goals, and measure designed to fulfill the student mission. Tonight, we have three presenters that will present based on the subgroups that we have been divided into, and our starting place will be the student, we'll get it here, program assessment and review, and I will now present to you Holly.
Get this down here. Okay. Good evening, my name is Holly Dolan, I am a senior at Osseo High School. For the past two years, I've had the pleasure of serving as a student member on the District Planning Advisory Council. Tonight, I am pleased to share with you recommendations from the Program Assessment and Review Subcommittee. Recommendation number one, we recommend that the district develop, integrate, and implement an embedded health education model for students at the senior high level across the district. At Osseo High School and throughout District 279, health classes viewed as a one-time course that can be taken at any time between ninth and twelfth grade. At Minnetonka High School, health and wellness education is embedded across the four-year high school experience, allowing students to continue learning healthy ways. The embedded model for education will be incorporated into core classes, freeing up space for students to take electives in their field of choice. It is also flexible and can meet individual student needs. The embedded health model will benefit students by addressing topics that would come up during their current grade level and being available to delve deeper into certain areas. Students will also have the opportunity to become CPR certified. The community would be involved by bringing in guest speakers to talk about an array of matters. Our second recommendation, we recommend that the district investigate and adopt a comprehensive curriculum resource to effectively meet the individual learning needs of each student in mathematics at the elementary level. As our subcommittee engaged in the work of exploring additional recommendations this year, an important conversation began around feedback that were received that our current math curriculum resource was not effectively meeting the needs of students at the elementary level. In an attempt to discern whether or not this perspect, perception was reflected in student achievement, we began the process of examining different data points, a few of which I would like to share with you this evening. The first graph serves to illustrate the percent change in overall MCA math proficiency from 2012 to 2016. Each blue bar represents one of our seventeen elementary sites in no particular order. The black horizontal line across the middle of the graph represents a zero percent change over this five-year time span. Bars that rise above this threshold indicate that an elementary site has increased its overall proficiency in math over time. Bars that fell, that fall below this black line show the extent to which proficiency has decreased over time. The red horizontal line indicates the state average change over the last five years, which indicates, which equates to a one-point-eight percent decrease in proficiency. The green horizontal line indicates our district's average change over the last five years, which equates to a two-point-four percent decrease in proficiency. In reviewing this trend data carefully, it is important to note that eleven of our seventeen elementary schools fall below the state average trend over the past five years. This data point served to support our concern that perhaps our math curriculum resource needed to be revisited. The second graph that we would like to share with you this evening shows each of the seventeen elementary sites in Osseo area schools and their respective proficiency levels on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment in Mathematics in 2016. The red horizontal line indicates the state average percent proficiency, fifty-nine-point-five percent, and the green horizontal line indicates the district, district average percent proficiency, fifty-four-point-five percent. Each individual blue bar represents a different elementary school in our district in no particular order. In reviewing how students performed at the elementary level in math just this past year, it is noteworthy that nine of our seventeen elementary schools fall below the state average level of proficiency. Furthermore, the range in overall proficiency across our system ranged from just under twenty percent proficient at one site to nearly eighty percent proficient at another. Again, this was another piece of data that we believe supported our recommendation for The final graph that we have for you, for you shows the MCA Growth Z scores by race in Mathematics in 2016. The zero percent midline across the horizontal center of the graph indicates that a group has made exactly the projected growth as determined by the state. Bars that rise above this threshold indicate that a racial group has grown more than it was projected to grow. Conversely, bars that fall below this threshold indicate that a racial group has grown less than it was projected to grow in 2016. In reviewing this information carefully, it is evident that Hispanic and Black students grew at a disproportionately slower rate than the state's projection. As a result of this data point and others previously referred in this presentation and in our final report, we recommend that the district investigate adapting a new curriculum resource to more effectively meet the needs of students in Osseo area schools. At this time, I would like to introduce Kevin Anderson, who will be sharing recommendations from the Achievement and Evaluation Subcommittee.
Uh, my name is Kevin Anderson, and I am the, uh, a new first-time member of the, of Deepak. I'm a parent of a first grader at Cedar Island Elementary. Uh, she was part of the Humane Society, uh, talking point, point of pride there. Um, so, over the, the course of this last year, we examined a wealth of information. Uh, our subcommittee looks at, uh, data points from across the district, graduation rates, poverty rates, uh, trends in racial demographics, uh, it's kind of the, the data-driven, uh, group, if you will. And based on our evaluating the information, we came up with three different recommendations. Uh, the first recommendation, uh, is that we transform our staffing system, uh, to assure that needs, that high-need schools are more equitably-staffed with skillful and experienced ESPs, teachers, and administrators, and stabilize staff at high-need schools to support site training and culture building in order to provide students with the best opportunity to achieve equitable, um, I'm not sure what, uh, that wording is a little bit off, but, uh, so, basically what this, uh, reflects is the high-need schools, uh, generally tend to have staff with lower experience. Um, and without addressing that specifically, we're going to continue to have gaps in achievement at our high-need schools. Um, one of the ways that we determine high-need schools in our district is through, primarily is poverty. So, uh, schools with higher percentages of, uh, free and reduced lunch is, is a very good indicator of, uh, school that is going to have higher-needs, uh, students. And what this ends up, uh, doing in our staffing is, as positions open at less higher-needs schools, the experienced teachers move out, uh, of the higher-needs school, filling a gap, uh, and we end up replacing those more experienced teachers with lesser, lesser-experienced staff. So, as the, our graph shows here, you can see there's a definite correlation between the length of time, uh, served, uh, that makes it sound like a prison sentence, but, uh, the length of time, uh, as a staff member or as a teacher, um, the less experienced staff you have in a school, the less proficient and the higher rates of, uh, non-graduation. So, it's, we felt that it was really important to start stabilizing that and find a ma, a way of, uh, backfilling or keeping, uh, quality staff in the, in this, uh, in the facilities that they currently represent. represent. One of our next recommendations is that the district establish expectation for staff to use culturally-responsive strategies and provide robust training and support for staff to develop the necessary skills. This is, goes hand-in-hand with keeping high-needs schools appropriately staffed. We need to have teachers that are aware of their, and connected with our student population. As it turns out, in our district, high-need schools tend to be a higher population of Black and Hispanic students. So, the effect is that our Black and Hispanic students end up with teachers that have less experience, and so we need to invest more in making sure that the staff that is available to them have culturally-responsive training and that we invest in those, the staff for those opportunities. Our third recommendation, there's a graph here that shows our, our ratio of students here, but I think you can examine that on your own, so... Our third recommendation is that we recommend that the district implement specific culturally-responsive programming for Black students, the ethnic group with the largest and most persistent performance gaps. There is an example, we have their Freedom Schools, that while it's, from the data that we've collected, it's still a little bit too early to tell the final outcome, initial results tend to be very favorable for it. So, what we would recommend is to implement more programming specifically designed at meeting the needs of Black students. In the report, there is several points that indicate specifically Black students, that at the reading MCA, they're at thirty-seven-point-four proficient, our lowest ethnic group. Math, they're thirty-point-four proficient, lowest ethnic group. Science, MCA is twenty-three-point-five proficient, lowest, again, the lowest ethnic group. Graduation rate is seventy-two percent, and this is the third lowest ethnic group, and it's been pretty stagnant. We've seen some modest increases, but it still remains well below the, the rates of other ethnic groups. So, yeah, that's our, our recommendation is, is that we address the needs of Black students specifically, as opposed to trying to whitewash it and say, "We're going to lift all boats." We're going to address problems that are very clearly defined in the data, so... Our next presenter, I'm, sorry, I didn't catch your name, but...
Hi, my name is Brian LaRose. I've been on D-PAC for about five years now. I have a fourth grader at Woodland Elementary and a seventh grader at Osseo Middle.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Namath. I'm a senior at Park Center, and this is my second year on D-PAC. The Student Services Committee has the following recommendations. Recommendation number one: We recommend the district continue the commitment to trauma-informed practices consistently throughout our district. And recommendation number two: We recommend the expansion of training and use of restorative practices at all levels across the district.
So, we don't have colorful graphs to show you, but we have a couple other pieces of information for you. Some of the common values and principles of restorative practices include the equity of voice, high expectations and support means doing things with one another and not to or for them, positive relationships, inclusive decision-making, community-building and sustaining, all members of the community are valued, authentic listening and sharing, and non-punitive response to wrongdoing. When asked how restorative practices were working at Woodland Elementary, which is a pilot school for the restorative practices, Principal Tony Beckler, who's joined us here tonight, said, "What we are finding is the restorative practice circle is the perfect way for staff members to learn about others, build stronger relationships, and reflect on practices. We are using a circle at every staff meeting in order to provide those opportunities. By being in mixed-level groups, speaking from our inner self, and using reflection questions about our practices, we are growing as a staff and a family." Paige Young, a school social worker at Rush Creek Elementary, shared these thoughts about how trauma-informed practices are used. "Incorporating mindfulness into lessons helps address some of the fight-or-flight-overdrive issues that trauma-exposed brains can't experience, and that 'mind up' is taught when applicable, which teaches kids about how memory and experiences can influence their brain and how calming techniques can help them stay regulated."
I want to thank, I want to thank the Superintendent and the Board for listening to our presentation tonight. I'd also like to thank the folks who were able to make it here this night, this evening that are members of D-PAC. I'd like to especially thank students, because I know that they have plenty of homework to do, but they still take the time out to join D-PAC, share with us their experiences, their thoughts, and it's been great having those students involved. I also want to do a special thank you to Don Pascoe for all of his years of service that he has, that he has shared with D-PAC. He will be missed. He is retiring this year, as you guys are all aware, but a special thank you to Don for everything that he has done for us. And one more call-out to principals, to teachers, to community members, anybody who's listening. If you'd like to join D-PAC, if what you hear tonight is inspirational, or you have ideas that you'd like to share, join D-PAC. Contact the school administrator, contact the school district office. We have opportunities, we have room for you, we have buildings that are not represented, and we'd like to have representation from the entire community. With that, I say, "Thank you." No questions?
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Questions? Any questions?
I would just like to thank all of you for sitting on this committee and taking time out of your personal lives to, to help us make decisions about things that are happening in our schools. It's really important work, so thank you for taking time.
And I would just like to say, as a board member, this is very valuable information, because it does help me when it comes to decision-making time. So, all the data you collect and the reflective work that you do does really help us as board members, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
You go first.
Thank you. I was reading about one of the things on here, the embedded health education. I think Holly, you had mentioned that, and then that Minnetonka was doing something. Are there other school districts in the area that are also doing that, or any other leading ones around the country?
Not... I have a short answer to walk all the way up here, but not that I'm aware of. I believe Minnetonka is the leading school in our area that's really pushing hard for the embedded health, and their results really have showed that it's helping their students, especially across the four years that they are in high school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all for letting me be a part of this work this year. It has been a real learning experience for me, and like Jessica said, this is really valuable information for us to make big decisions, and so just thank you for all the time and energy that you've put into this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'd also like to echo the thanks from the rest of the Board, and I know that in the past, I've worked with D-PAC, and I truly admire all the hard work that you do, and thank you so much. This is a very eye-opening. Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just wrap up by saying again, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. It's a big group. It could be bigger. We have open seats. People are invited. It's an influential group. They actually make change. They actually, you know, do real work that impacts the district, so it's a great opportunity if there are any community members that feel like they want to get more plugged into the operations of the district. This is an excellent, excellent place to get plugged in. So, once again, thank you to everyone that's, that's worked on this. Special thank you to the students that presented. You did a great job, and we'll take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, next up on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items to, that anyone wishes to have removed from the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none, I will move to accept the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The Consent Agenda is approved on a six-oh vote. Next up on our agenda is Second Reading of Policy 549, Age of Entrance. Margaret Weston.
Policy 549, Age of Entrance, is an action item on this evening's agenda, as the Board Chair stated. The proposal is to amend the existing Policy 549. First reading of the policy was March fourteen, twenty-seventeen, at the school board meeting. At least four weeks have passed since the first reading, and under the school board's bylaws, if approved this evening, the policy will be amended. The proposed revisions eliminate criteria for early admission to first grade. Those criteria exceed the criteria listed in the governing statutes. The proposed change also brings us into conformance with our neighboring school districts so that we do not set up barriers for our residents who want to have their children start first grade earlier. Additional changes were added to conform to our format for school board policies.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will move to accept the, or to accept the Second Reading of Policy 549. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Second Reading of Policy 549, Age of Entrance, is accepted on a vote of six to zero. Next up on our agenda are gifts to the district. I would like to be, make a motion to graciously accept gifts to the district totaling $125,018.67. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gifts to the district in the total of $125,018.67 are graciously accepted on a vote of six to zero. Next on the agenda are announcements. Director Ostaffy.
First announcement: A negotiation strategy meeting will be held tonight, Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty-seventeen, at seven PM in Room N-ten at the Educational Service Center here. This meeting will be closed to the public. Number two: A policy committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, at six PM in Room W-42 at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. And number three: A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, May second, at six PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. The topics will be World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan, Recommended Priorities for 2017-2018, and the World's Best Workforce Priority Work Update, Digital Learning. This meeting will be open to the public. Number four: A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, May ninth, twenty-seventeen, at six PM in the Board Room at the ESC. This topic will be Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee Report. Number five: A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, at six PM in the Board Room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. And number six: A negotiation strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, at seven PM in the Room N-ten at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public.
Thank you. And one thing I'd just like to add to item number four with the school board work session on Tuesday, May ninth, even though it wasn't in the, in the script, that meeting will also be open to the public. So, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. We are, we're adjourned. I will move to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And with that, we are adjourned at six forty-six PM. Thanks, everyone.